Okay, I am going to call this meeting to order. Number one thousand six hundred and eighteen at six oh four P M. And the first order of business is the student spotlight. Wherever we can see them best.
Right, I'm gonna give you my spot and you can come right inside of the owl so that the.
It might just go right there.
Well, if they want to be seen, that's welcome. Come right where I normally am.
Welcome, welcome. Okay.
Um, hello, everyone. My name is Charles Dickens and I have recently finished writing my book, A Christmas Carol, and I would like to invite you all to a showing. They're all over weekends and the times are Friday and Saturday at seven P M. and Sunday at two. And we hope that you will come to a showing and enjoy the play.
This Friday?
That's one.
This Friday, this Saturday. Uh, hello there. I'm the main character of his book. You can come if you feel like it. I don't really like you. Bye and humble.
Yeah, wait, oh, Danelle, let's find your seat. Let's find your seat. Oh, yeah, did I look at you there?
Okay.
Can you get one to dinner? So I proved out motion. We got it.
Jim, did you give one to everybody? With the minutes?
Yeah, everything's.
All right, um.
Yes.
Student representative report. We have a.
Oh, I don't know. Do we have a student today, Mr. Carpenter?
Uh, we're trying to find one who's available tonight.
So maybe not.
All right, so.
There's nobody there. I would think that maybe.
We'll circle back to that.
Business?
Business report.
May I make a motion to move business report up to the slot after student representative report?
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, I guess we need to do a roll call vote. Um, I just want to remark that I'm overwhelmed Beth with the attendance tonight and thank you very much for everyone who was able to come in. Appreciate it. All right, so Danelle?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Jeffrey?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Art?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
And Carrie Anne?
Yes.
Oh, myself. Well, thank you for reminding me that I count here. So now we're gonna hear from Chris on what we have on page fourteen A, a warrant, and I got to need a motion for the warrant.
To accept the warrants dated December sixteenth, twenty twenty one.
Second.
Jeffrey Bobrun and Bonnie Silvers with the second. And are there any questions for press or the?
Chris, do you have anything to say about it?
Um, I, I have some notes here that I wrote next to the report if you guys had any questions, but um, I, I guess the only one I'd want to point out is the, the December twelfth warrant, the four hundred and six thousand. That's a pretty big one. Um, and I just wanted you to know, I mean, a hundred and sixty of that was transportation. And we had a lot of spent tuition that came in that time as well, um, a couple of months worth or so um, of another hundred and eight thousand. So that's why that one was so big. But other than that, no, I really didn't have anything informational to add to it.
Seeing no other questions, uh, let's take a roll call vote to accept the warrant. Uh, Danelle?
Yes.
Uh, Laura?
Yes.
Jeffrey?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
I'm gonna go Jane as I go around. Uh, Arthur?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
And Carrie Anne?
Yes.
You said Jane, but you didn't vote.
Yes, sir.
We got your name. Two parts, two things.
Yeah.
There.
Yes, okay. Boy, you have a lot of confidence. I can't even vote. Thank you very much, Chris. I hope this makes up for all the meetings you had to stay for two hours.
Not a problem. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Only give me hand signals. It was very helpful.
Very helpful. Okay, so um, is there anyone? Uh, I see a couple of public on, on the screen there if somebody wants to make a statement now, um, take comments. Okay, so I see a Stan Howard. Stan Howard. My mask is stuffing my mouth unfortunately. I wear a tighter mask today and it's not working. All right, Alana?
Thank you. Um, I am encouraged to see actually not much more public here tonight, and I think that says a lot to the proposal that's on the table and hopefully not a lot of contra. Not a lot of people are against what the policy proposal is putting up to the school committee today for first read. As of today, as of yesterday, we had eight hundred thousand deaths because of COVID. We know that as a study yesterday, one point, one point one million deaths were prevented because of immunizations. And it's now estimated that ten point three million hospitalizations were prevented because of immunizations. The peak deaths were January two thousand and one with four thousand deaths per day. It was expected that if vaccinations did not exist in July of twenty of twenty one, we could have seen up to twenty one thousand deaths a day. I think a lot of people are talking about the science behind vaccines. We know that vaccines prevent serious illness and prevent death. And it is our role as adults to ensure the health of our community. We know that vac, people who are vaccinated can spread the disease, but it has proven that they spread it at a much lower rate. And we need to get ahead of the Omicron virus and do whatever we can to, to ensure the safety of our kids. I will also say that in the discussion of after school activities, although I don't think that mandate goes far enough, and I wish our governor would, would propose a different mandate for everybody. I think it is important that we understand that this is a choice that parents have. This is not a protected class. Unvaccinated people are not a protected class. School is a right. After school is a choice. As someone who works with the most har, the hardest hit community, we are at a ninety nine percent vaccine rate. These are the people who already don't have access to your after school programs. They already don't have busing after practices. These are kids who will be able to continue to participate as the parents have chosen to vaccinate their children. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. So now we can go on to approval of the minutes.
I'm going to approve the minutes from December second, twenty twenty one as presented.
That's Jeffrey.
Second.
Second from Laura.
Uh, that's.
Well, Jeffrey is a close reader of the minutes and I'm happy to invite his edits.
No, no, I just, um, I, I want to make a point. In the finance subcommittee, there were, Laura was not appointed to the committee during the meeting. After the fact, she was appointed to the secondly, finance subcommittee. So, um, I'm not sure what we need to do about remediating it or if there needs to be acknowledgement of this upcoming events. I don't think it, it needs to reflect this minutes, but.
Yeah, I think we should say, uh, it was mentioned that, um, that she might be interested, but we, we didn't, I hadn't appointed her.
So instead of amending these minutes, maybe what we could do is just make a point to be added to this minutes that you make a statement saying that Laura was appointed to the finance subcommittee, if you don't mind. Okay, thank you.
Any other amendments, additions? Danelle?
Um, so the politics of the thought that I was put on as of September or maybe, yeah.
Well, I think at the meeting, when I formed our subcommittees, Dennis was feeling that we should have a larger representation of, from the committee. And I don't know whether it was formally stated that you would be one by, remember you volunteering that you would do.
Okay, I just wanted to, it's not in the minutes under politics committee, but just to reiterate.
So when we get to the, um, subcommittee reports, maybe that's a good place to, for the chairs to.
Okay.
To formally, okay.
Okay.
And I'll make sure.
Can I just request a point of clarification? The amendment, y, you don't want the previous minutes amended? You would just like it noted?
For this meeting, yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, um, so I'm ready for a roll call vote to approve the minutes. Carrie Anne?
Yes.
Uh, Jim?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Arthur?
Yes.
Jane, yes. Bonnie?
Yes.
Uh, Jeff?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Danelle?
Yeah.
All right, so we have some enrollment numbers to look at.
So in your packet on five B is, uh, the enrollment report and as of December first, we were at six hundred and forty students, which is up one.
And I appreciate it as the new enrollment to accompany this.
Yes, she, I, I think this is in here, but.
Yeah, yeah. Any questions for Beth?
And in grade two.
Can you please speak loudly something?
In grade two.
I hope you're not asking something specific. Go ahead.
Okay.
Get it? I, I mean, it won't, I, I, I can, I can ask, um, Lynette when we get that.
Okay.
So two is of interest to you?
Yeah, we brought two. I mean, it's, you know, family use or whatever.
Most likely, if that, let me see where it says. One was, it says unknown and, um, one homeschool, right? It's hard to tell because this is what happened throughout the whole year, so.
Don't worry about it.
That's who is from November also.
Miscellaneous correspondence.
I don't think there is any.
Well, now, uh, we can go to the update on the early college initiative with Ken Knox and John Weinstein, but I could have the superintendent calls first and then John. Is John available now?
Uh, I just let him know that you're ready, so if he doesn't come on in twenty seconds, he may need a few minutes.
Okay.
What does I like to adjust the committee somewhat? Well, we're supposed to talk, but I'd like to give them a chance to speak.
Yeah.
May I move to move, uh, the discussion of the superintendent calls ahead of?
Well, he's, let's give him twenty seconds. What I do want to say, because Ken is here and some people may not know, he is a former member of the school committee from Egmont. He served as chair in an excellent fashion and we were desolate that we could not find a house to buy in our school district and so we lost him to West Stockbridge. I think we're very grateful that we still have a connection to him through this wonderful project. I just, for the new people, I thought he should know. Can you be able to understand me with this muffle going on?
I am.
Yeah. All right.
Sure.
Do you have any reason to think, uh, let's see, who's letting him in?
Me. Yeah, so we're, he's not here. I would give him some time, just from. Yeah. I'd be happy to go.
Okay, so we'll start with the superintendent goal and it's, when he's ready, we might take a pause.
I'm hoping that we're gonna do.
It's just gonna be done. Okay.
Everybody's ready to take a nap.
No, it's gonna be in the list of supplements. In the earlier one, but there's a lot.
Okay.
I'll put it here. Jesse sweater.
Well, there's been quite a few today.
That's, that's one of the best seasonal sweaters I've seen ever.
You've had a day of, of festive.
Oh, are we going on to your goals?
Yes.
Sure.
Yeah, all right.
You'd want to talk to the chair of the.
Yes, we, we have, uh, I've done my usual, uh, trying to spread the wealth of leadership and, um, so Jim, the Pisa is willing to chair the subcommittee that he's on, uh, he just got appointed. He's been on the committee for four weeks.
Bonnie and Jane in the vote raised two to one.
Congratulations.
I had her for speaking and I thought it was excellent, uh, reviewing your goals and that was, I think, the that when we accomplish all of this, as we work and accomplish all of this, we can be proud of it for part of the school system. It's really amazing what's to be. And this meeting is.
January?
January.
Um, so if, if I could, I would, um, talk a little bit about the, the documents that I think, um, the committee would, when they get to that, would be recommending to send forward, but as we agreed to, we were going to, um, put together a document based off of the, uh, goals that we had agreed to earlier that was more of a collective set of goals between the school committee and the superintendent. So I gave a little bit of the history of that, um, from the M A S C and D C around, their focus on it being a collaborative effort between the, uh, school committee and the superintendent. And then, um, I wanted to make sure that everybody knew that this was vetted by the administrative team and, um, through the faculty and staff, through the administrative team, so that, uh, when we put together our strategy for district improvement, that's what, that's what drives all of this work. So, um, trying to capture the fact that there are four possible standards, forty one indicators and twenty one elements we can choose from. Although it feels like maybe all of them are addressed in this document, um, and, uh, which is here for, um, you know, when you have insomnia. Um, I tried very hard to, to pare it down, so that's frightening. But, uh, the way it's set up is that the goals are, um, listed with key actions and strategies and then, um, possible evidence that would support that the actions and strategies are, are being accomplished. And wherever possible, it, it indicates the, um, the participation of both the superintendent and the school committee working together to accomplish these goals. So also I tried to show the alignment with, which standard, which indicator we were addressing and which element. So to help with this even further, uh, going forward, uh, I, I've kind of nicely coerced some of my coworkers helped me go backwards, but going forward on your agendas, when we are presenting something that addresses a specific indicator, we're going to highlight that on the agenda, so you'll be able to know that you've seen something that, that matches this, because there's just an awful lot going on. I also have, um, lots of binders. Those who were in my office the other day got to see that I keep, um, all of our agendas together. Any, any of the evidence that you'd like to come in and see is available at some point if you feel like you haven't seen activity or something. There is a reality that we might, I, I know you find this shocking, that we might not accomplish all these things, or to the degree that we hoped. But, uh, but there could be some, you know, some, something that you want to ask about or you'd like to see more of. And please feel free to reach out and I'd be happy to share with you what I do have to support the work that we've done so far. Um, and in the case, just so you know, of goal one and two, a lot of the key actions and the, um, evidence were similar because it is under the same standard. So I didn't repeat that. I, I lumped them together to make it, um, easier for people to work, to, to work through. So I, I'd be interested in any feedback that you have or, um, I'm sure you've read it all and, um, are ready for any questions. I'm kidding. Um, and, you know, uh, I hope that this is helpful and how we're going through it will make it a little bit easier in the process.
Agreed.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
I think that it'll be helpful. I'm going to try to provide a worksheet scorecard type of sheet for every meeting where when any of these actions are referenced, you can have a place to write what you're hearing, write it down, so that it's not just a check, oh, there was uh, a meeting of the elementary school task force, then you could write down some details about what you learned and what, uh, that's, whether our goals as a school committee and as a district are being met. So this is for us to keep our eyes on the district improvement plan through the work that Beth is doing in particular areas. Try to make it feel like a group project rather than us just checking up on whether Beth is doing what she said she was gonna do, but are we really knowledgeable about all the things that are going on? I hope to have that ready for the next meeting. Now, we don't have a vote listed here, but I think a vote of confidence in this would be, uh, called for, so I'd love to have a motion to accept, uh, the collective goals of Southern Berkshire Regional School.
I knew that we accept the goals as presented, uh, this season, I was superintendent for the upcoming, well, actually began tenth.
Bonnie?
Through August twenty two.
So you out, outshot, um, Jim, so I'm gonna let Jim have a second on this.
I'm sure.
All right. Are there any further questions?
I would just like to say one thing. The, our meeting to establish have been very, very collaborative. And I love the fact that we were able to go back and forth in terms of, oh, here's something the school committee should be doing, or here's a place where we have elected to do something and this is how we could support the superintendent. So I think it's a very worker friendly repertoire. So thank you for going through all the different iterations.
Okay. All right, uh, so the vote, uh, Carrie Anne?
Yes.
Danelle? Yes. Laura?
Yes.
Jeffrey?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Jane, yes? Arthur?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Yes.
Jim? Yes, all right. So thank you for all the work you put in and now it's our job to help make this all come true.
Yes.
And I didn't realize I had out.
All right. So now we have a very exciting presentation on, an update on the early college designation initiative and I'd like to introduce actually a friend, used to be a neighbor and, um, somebody of great, uh, knowledge of education, John Weinstein, who's the main speaker here. And are you speaking, Ken, or are you just?
Or I probably will sit this one out.
Okay. Okay, so happy to have you, John.
Great, well, so excited to be here, Jane and the whole school, school board, because this is the, the school board of, at least my, my, my former home um, in New, in New Marlboro, my, my across the street neighbors and I see your interior. I'm really excited to be involved in this work with a school district that I so love and I'm so passionate about and so really excited to get to stay involved up here in, in, in this capacity at Simon's Rock. So we have been, um, partnering and with, with Mount Everett Regional High School since twenty nineteen. Kind of partnership kind of got started right before pandemic and we've maintained partnering in various ways through pandemic times. But, um, so we've been able to build on that relationship of offering courses first onsite at Mount Everett and then we, we went into the virtual, when everyone went to virtual, so we could keep the partnership going, um, and now back in person. Um, in terms of that footprint that has been kind of at the one course at a time approach, which has provided some great opportunities for some students. But we're really excited to be able to make this an available opportunity to many more students again. And we've been working, um, to do the state designation to be a Massachusetts early college site, which is a state designation that you apply for. It's a partnership between a school district and the Institute of Higher Education. So it'd be South Berkshire Regional School District with Bard College at Simon's Rock. And what we're doing as, as we pursue the state designation, this is also coming with an expansion of the model to be what's called a whole school model. The name is a little misleading that a whole school model means all the students participate in the program in some way. That doesn't necessarily mean all students are taking early college courses for credit, though in the way that we've configured it, it would be, it would be possible for all students to do that if they wished. It's really key that it fit the students' educational goals, their life goals. We do want to expose more students to college as one of the options they should consider within those goals. Again, it is ultimately their, their decision. And so through this, students would participate in college readiness programming activities starting from eighth grade. And when they get to eleventh grade, and the option of taking early college courses, again, some, an option that some students already have, but we'd be building the capacity of the program to provide some early college credits. I would say to a target, we'd love it if about eighty percent of the students were choosing to do that. Again, capacity wise, we could get to a hundred. This is an advantage of a very small school district with small classes. Um, and then students would have different levels of participation and involvement. The maximum would be about thirty credits, so a student could earn as much as one year of college tuition free. And in the kind of small seminar style classes for which Simon's Rock is known. This is something we're particularly excited to do with Mount Everett, again, a small college partner with a small district. And we're really excited, um, you know, i- if we could move in this direction. And so we're really, I'm hoping that the school board is, is in support of this idea. Um, and we would, we would really love to be able to expand this work, continue to grow. It's really an exciting partnership that I think can only grow and can really give students at Mount Everett an opportunity, um, that is becoming more of an opportunity statewide and we think would be a really, um, u- unique program for them.
So in your packet, um, and, and John and Ken and team have just been incredible, um, Mr. Carpenter, tireless with the application process. We have been at this for months, um, on end and, um, there's just been an incredible amount of work. Um, I'm really excited to share with you when we get, we, we have a, a deadline that was supposed to be December fifteenth. It's now December twenty third. So, um, we are, we are working incredibly hard to, um, to complete all of this and I, I, I'm just, it, it's really, really quality work, so I, I'm looking forward to sharing that in more detail as we move forward. But one of the things, um, that we really wanted to share at this point is the vision statement that, um, is part of the designation process and that is in your packet under six A. So, um, I think that's something, you know, we'd love to just have the school committee, um, maybe take a vote of support just on, on where we are on this and, and on this vision, because I think that's, it's, it would be something that would be just nice to know that we have that support as we're moving forward.
No, I, I move to, um, support the vision statement that has been worked on between, uh, the administration and Bard College at Simon's Rock for the early college program.
And so that's Jeff's motion to support the vision statement, uh, superintendent with the Bard, um, College at Simon's Rock, was a second from Bonnie. Does anybody have any further comments? Dennis?
I have a question I'd like to ask. It's been wandering around in my mind for a long time. And, and Ken, it wasn't in the book that you returned to me, as a matter of fact, but that's probably because I didn't ask for it. One of the things that I've always wanted to find out about this program is that, you know, we are at a point right now up here in the Berkshires where we have a lot of new people coming in and a lot of people going out, you know, a lot of it tied to COVID, of course. And, uh, what, what I'm, I've never understood this program in depth enough to understand do people, children, children have to actually be resident in terms of their parents here in, in the district or in the Commonwealth?
To participate in this?
To, to participate. To participate in this program.
Right. Well, the way this is designed is for current students in this district to have that opportunity, but I don't know the wider scope, but the, what we're working on is, is a partnership between our students here and the students at the faculty at Bard. John, do you have anything else?
Well, I was curious, because I, I was hoping in my seat, constant seeking of trying to get more people into this area, that, that there would be no restriction, that, you know, that, that basically people that are maybe coming up here thinking they're gonna be up here part-time or whatever, and they're sharing house space and all that stuff that's going on. You know, that, that also can be a good source of permanent residence here and so forth and so on. And I just wanted to find out if there were any restrictions that might inhibit them from participating in this program.
You know, the program is designed for students who are attending, you know, high school in the Commonwealth, but certainly, so, so the you know, a- any student who's able to be eligible to be a student at Mount Everett would meet that state portion in terms of eligibility. So I think if, if part of the impetus question is, is this something that might attract students to choose Mount Everett as their high school, as opposed to perhaps, if it's a family that's living in two places, does this make this the more attractive location? I, I think it certainly could, and that could certainly be an, an added benefit. And I mean, it is then something that you're offering, you know, that, that, that other places might not have. So I think in, you know, in terms of the eligibility, I think it would be a student who's eligible to be a student at Mount Everett, right? That's what, that's what would determine who could participate in this program. And I know that, I mean, I know from, you know, from living in the Berkshires for, for twenty years, I know students do also choice in to different districts. So, you know, potentially if this is some, there could be another student in a different district in Massachusetts who, you know, choices into South Berkshire, because this is a program. But again, anyone who's kind of the eligibility threshold, I think from the state's perspective, is that they're a student at a high school in the Commonwealth.
Okay, Anne?
Thank you. Hey, John, it's nice to see you. Thank you so much. This is great. I'm wondering if you could talk a little bit about what, like, from Simon's Rock's perspective, like, are there other districts that you're doing this with across, I mean, either the Commonwealth or in other states? And, or any within Berkshire County?
Currently, in terms of our footprint and the footprint of what Simon's Rock is doing, and this is in the larger context of Bard College, of which we're a part, does this in many different states and locations, though not actually in Massachusetts. We did our, certainly Mount Everett is our most extensive partner site, where we've done the classes during the year as well as in the summer. We did, we did some partnering with Berkshire Hills during the summer, when they had students also taking some of our summer courses. So we had a number of students from Berkshire County participating in our summer session, in that case, in classes alongside Simon's Rock students, who are based at Simon's Rock. So there were, there were some students each from, from those two districts in that program. You know, would we want to do this with many districts? I think it's something that we would not, we're not currently doing this, this kind of state designation with another place right now. I don't think we would do it with more than two or three, and it may be that we just do it at one. I, I do think the whole school approach is likely something that would be unique to Mount Everett, because just in terms of capacity, you know, Simon's Rock is not a large institution, we're generally about three hundred fifty to four hundred fifty students total ourselves. It's very attractive to, to us that Mount Everett is a small school, because it, it's a way to have that significant involvement without in some sense having most, more of our students not be based at Simon's Rock. So if I think if we did something with another district in the area, and that's definitely an if, it's likely that it would be something smaller. So, you know, this program is designed to probably serve about thirty students per grade in a very credit-intensive way, and then other students in a less credit-intensive way, though again, we could expand, you could expand from thirty to forty pretty easily. I think we might do something that size at another place. So a larger district might have like an early college academy model, where some students are within that. It, it seems like the whole school, you know, when we started this, the state, I think because they're really trying to get to large numbers of students, and they initially said, you know, you're not, this isn't a big district, this isn't helping us get to that goal that fast. And I said, one, students in small rural districts have rights as well. Inclusion issues are also really important in small rural districts, so the fact that we're not in Boston doesn't mean we're not important. I say that a lot in these meetings, because I keep being reminded of how far we are, you know, and I said, okay, it's not a lot of students, but we can really provide something for all students to have the opportunity. You know, and I think the size of the district really helped. So this is certainly the district where we're most interested in doing this, and I think for the whole school, it's really likely the only, the only case where we do something like that. I think we would do something more academy-like if we were doing that in another district. But really, I think our goal institutionally, we do want to be involved in the statewide early college movement. It's a little, be a little strange for Simon's Rock, as the founder of all of this nationwide, not to be a designated site, but we're really interested in what's different, what pushes the envelope, what's more local and close to home, and Mount Everett hits all of those boxes so well. This is really the ideal kind of district for us to do this partnership in. So I think in terms of larger work, we would be more interested in being involved with like technical assistance across the state, training teachers in early college pedagogy. We're not looking to run a huge number of sites, you know, in this type of intensive partnership level in a lot of places. So I think this would, it may grow a bit, but should be a fairly unique offering to, to Mount Everett.
Great, thank you so much. And I'm also wondering, Jane, is it possible if somebody could email the vision statement? Because it didn't end up in the packet that was sent out, so I don't, I don't have a copy of it to be able to vote on it.
I'm gonna separate email. It's, it's in your email.
Oh. Because it came, it came later.
Yeah.
We got it.
Oh, it's not in the packet?
It came in a follow-up email with a couple of documents, right? Maybe my goals, and maybe my goals, the vision statement, because they were, we got them after a couple of meetings, so it was a follow-up email from Lynette.
It came yesterday from Lynette.
Okay, thank you.
I can also drop you off a packet on my way home.
That'll be a little late for the vote, thanks though.
Okay. Bonnie?
A couple of questions, because there may have been some things, some things changed since we spoke a while ago. First, with this program, our students will be earning up to thirty credits free of charge?
Okay.
I just wanted, you know, to confirm that.
Yeah.
Because maybe he got frozen.
No, he's, okay, the answer is yes, because I'm writing it.
Okay. Okay.
Yes.
And the other thing is, in no way does this preclude anybody after tenth grade seeking admission at Simon's Rock.
No, not at all. If, you know, I mean, there, certainly there have been students from the South Berkshire District coming to Simon's Rock's full program. One of our current board members of our school actually had been in South Berkshire before she came to Simon's Rock. So that cer- it certainly doesn't preclude it, it's, you know, I, it, students will certainly, more students will become familiar with Simon's Rock through this, and some may decide that's, you know, they're interested. We do have our Berkshire Regional Scholarship, which focuses on students in the surrounding counties, which again, students from South Berkshire have done before. So it's, yes, this certainly doesn't preclude at all. This is just an additional opportunity for students to be involved in another way.
Um, third question is, will, do you have or will you be working at all in terms of the career pathways and internships, et cetera, that are in Beth's plans? Will there be any marrying of coursework?
Yes. There's quite a bit, so one of the things we've been working on for the, for this next step of the state designation application is actually to show aligned with the various pathways, students in the liberal arts pathway, what would they be taking? Students in culinary arts, what would they be taking? Students in global studies, how does this enhance each of those? And we're also, so for example, we have a Center for Food Studies at Simon's Rock, and we actually offered food studies courses over the summer. It's really exciting to me that South Berkshire has a culinary arts pathway, because this is a way for students to add additional courses around culinary arts and food studies and see, and learning more dimensions there. It can really be additive, really looking to not repeat things, right? You know, this, this doesn't, you know, this doesn't, this enhances like advanced placement courses, students would have those in their pathways as well. So this, this really is additive, and it is designed very much to go in with the pathways, so that for each of the pathways, we'll be able to show what might be the early college courses best for you to, to take within that pathway, to complete that pathway and be earning college credits as well.
And then the last is, a while ago, we spoke about the effort that Simon's Rock would put forward in terms of, we have families where there's never been a connection with college. And we had discussed the whole idea of families going on campus and parents getting to know, you know, yes, you, your child can go to college. Will there be, are you planning to still include that in the program?
Yes, and I think the, the, like, that's why a lot of the exploration just of the college campus and doing certain things on the campus start as young as eighth grade, because as we know, students often form these impressions, and families form impressions of what they can do very young. That has been my experience of one of the challenges in the county, where a third grader will say, oh, I'm not really college material. Like, how do we know that yet? Like, what does that mean? So I think, so yes, and, and just starting with that familiarity and doing some activities on the campus as a way in, so they start to see this is a place I could come and do things, is, is definitely part of the, the overall planning for, for the, how the program would go. It's not just students taking classes, right? There's, there's other wraparound supports and services.
Thank you so much. I think this will be wonderful.
Yeah. All right, so any other questions? As far as I know, we haven't voted.
We did not.
We did not.
But sometimes these discussions go on and on, and I we're ready to vote. We're making sure that we're ready to vote in support of the vision statement and the work that's being done, and hope that our support is going to help the state say yes to us. Carrie Anne?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Art?
Yes.
Jane, yes? Bonnie?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
And Danell?
Yes.
All right, thank you, thank you. It feels like a wonderful holiday gift to be on the next phase of this, and I'm glad we got a few extra days, because
We needed them, yeah.
Yeah.
We needed them, yeah.
Well, I, I just want to point out that we don't have a grant writer, and Beth and team have put in untold hours on this, because they believe so much in it, and yes.
I will say, in this part, the state did give us in the designation some funding, and we have a wonderful grant writer that has been working with us in, had Sarah, and I can't remember Sarah's last name.
Sarah Imboden, yes.
Imboden, thank you. Who, that, that they gave us some support to help us with this, so it's been fabulous, and it, it's been, I think, a really great experience to, to work with all of you, it's been really great.
All right, second thought, and this has been a fant- it's really a fantastic collaboration in all ways, and I think that, you know, this is really part of the work that I do and have done over the years, is design early college programs for places, and this is a unique design. This isn't something that was pulled out from another place. We've been able to draw on a lot of experience and other things, but this is truly a unique program. In, in this, in this configuration, this would be the first that I've certainly been involved in this, does this, and it's really come out of truly collaborating and, and listening and, and really learning about what would be the best map. So it's been great to do, and we certainly hope that the state will, will give us the thumbs up and really support our fabulous southwestern corner of the state and all of our students here.
Yes. Final comment, Jeff?
Thank you. I just thought to that, the administration and Simon's Rock partners, whatever we can do to get this like really pumped up in the media, it's really important, I think, not just waiting for funding and whatnot, but to be proactive and getting this forward. So that's just my hope and aspiration for you guys.
Do you have a letter of support from the school committee in the packet?
I'm not sure if it's required, what is required is this, that, that we, that we collaboratively meet and share our progress on the work that we're doing. I don't think they require a direct letter of support in this part, so there will be a, you know, a memorandum of, you know, understanding that we have things like that, but you know, I think, I think this was a critical piece that we wanted to get done before the submission, that is a requirement. It is, I'm so, this is, this is my, this is my entrepreneurial spirit, just really getting charged up, I love this stuff. So I love to hear unique, and I'm so excited. So fingers crossed.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you, John, thank you, Ken.
Thank you.
Voice.
So noisy, Ken.
Okay, I don't see anything under item seven, unfinished business. Of the business with the district member towns. Do any of the members of the regional school district planning board want to make any comments about what's happened since our last meeting, if anything? I just want to say that there are, even though there was a statement that we wouldn't have any more meetings until the new year, there are meetings next week. One on Monday and one on Wednesday, which they are important meetings, because they have to do with the community outreach and the, the project planning committee, so it's, it continues to be very taxing on our time. And I just want to thank, while I'm on the taxing time, I'll thank, I'll say that.
Also, we should also let people know that they can see the published reports.
Oh, yeah, the published reports.
Htowns.org.
At Htowns.org, you can see the reports that have been distributed in various meetings, and they are quite interesting, and, and your, your eyes on them will be good, because you can either come to a meeting and comment, or you can send along to any of our members, Danell, Bonnie, myself, and Laura. And we haven't heard anything from, altered about them being willing to
I, I need to do something.
Yeah, okay.
Sorry.
Jeff? We'll look into that, but I'm putting it in the minutes, but you're gonna look into it.
Yes.
I will, I will also comment, just because today I had an opportunity to meet with the business office, and just specifically on this topic. And there is a tremendous amount of work that has been asked of our business service, to the point where I reached out and actually asked the team to consider finding, funding from the grant work to get them time, because we really can't afford to give them any time with how, how much work we've got going on in the district right now. And even with that, just beginning, just to let everybody know the business, people have been working on their own separately, on their own time for this project, but lots and lots of hours, so I think people just need to know that that's happening behind the scenes with everybody, so.
So in the subcommittee report, I neglected to put the Public Health Liaison Report and the Early Childhood Report, so with your permission, I'd like to stick them in here.
So moved. Thank you.
All right, any discussion about that? Carrie Anne?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Arthur?
Yes.
Jane, yes?
Bonnie? Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Danell? So I'm gonna squeeze Bonnie in, in the beginning here with the Public Health Liaison Report.
Okay. This was first that I have to say that some great team put together, and they were wonderful and that they allowed me to ask so many questions on behalf of the school committee.
Like a lot, yeah.
Like a lot.
Yeah.
Really surprised, and you know, I asked a lot of questions.
Yeah.
So the first thing I wanted to let you know is that Julia Cos from Edgermont's Board of Health, she wanted to thank the entire district and the school committee for the work we have been doing in terms of communicating, and particularly how we handle the issue of the South Edgermont School. And particularly how we handle the issue of the South Egremont School. And she wanted everyone to know how appreciative the, the community is. Amy, or I think it is.
Yes.
She gave the dire report that cases are increasing. We are in. The red heavy transmission area. And then she just gave, which is very, very preliminary. But the, uh, the, something like 700 people have been, this was last week, have been tested for Omicron. It shows that whether 30 to 40% of effectiveness if they were vaccinated, 80% with boosters. Beth brought up the question of how long after a positive COVID can someone be vaccinated or boosted? And here, what's interesting is the answer varied. A couple of the professionals telling us soon as you come out of. Isolation after the 10 days, you can get a vaccine or booster. And others stating it's the 90 days, which is what I had heard. The consensus was ask your doctor. I know that doesn't help everybody, but ask your doctor. So that was. An interesting piece. They agreed on the need for a January booster clinic. The quote was, you want people fully vaccinated. They will work, I guess, with you there to determine if it's just for us. Sandy, and if I get this wrong, we'll change. Sandy reported that 76% of our seventh through 12th graders are vaccinated.
Who did that?
76% of seventh through 12th graders are vaccinated. 42% of the elementary schools of those eligible, and obviously that's a new.
Grade only. That was fifth grade only.
Oh, only fifth grade. I got that wrong. I will change that. And that we, there is 19% where we have no information. One of the big things that Sandy has been working on and we have a very low number is on parents presenting vaccination cards. Has that improved at all?
It has.
It has?
I got the report today that it has improved. And I got, I have some updated numbers too.
Okay.
That I could provide later on.
All right.
What low grade is what?
Like, like very.
Is it less than 10%?
Much.
Much less.
Much. Like so, but it's increased this week. I, I've been told. We put it out on my feed and on social media and it's increased this week exponentially. So that's good. I don't know the, the actual numbers. 20.
Leslie and Pat, I'm sorry, I don't know their, which groups they're with, which.
So Leslie is the.
Public health nurse for Egremont.
And Pat is for, is the public health official for.
Chuffing. Yes.
That's interesting. Tell me what I know.
Yeah.
They both volunteered and said that we can help you with gathering numbers. And data so that if we want, and this would obviously come from the administrative team, Sandy is part of the team, is. To get, to get, uh, information that we need. And Leslie noted that she can do up to 200 vaccines a day. So one of the things that might help is families who tell, who tell, oh, I show up to Walgreens and it's closed. They said, you know, in addition to the January booster clinic, they can help you with vaccines. I guess we have to figure out what we want.
What kind of mobile clinic basis do you mean, or just add more clinics? Add more clinics. Add more. Because they're, they're full right now. We can't even get it.
Yeah. People haven't been able, you know, to schedule, so you'd add more. Jim Willis, I'm really, I'm not sure how he was. Who is the tri-county.
Tri-count.
Tri-count.
Tri-Town. He said the biggest thing he has been finding is the importance, and he directed it because I was asking the school committee. To not exacerbate. The political polarization of dialogue that's going on. So in his recommendation, because I asked specifically because of policies. He said his experience has been, and he has been getting such vitriol in his emails, in, in his, he's been giving presentations. And he said, anything you can do to tone down in whatever you do, he said, it's not that it's a rational discussion. We had a really good suggestion because we were talking about extracurriculars and what do we require, what should we require? And her suggestion was, as both as a parent and as a professional in the area, is to try to use our coaches and our. Parents of students on teams to get more actively involved in encouraging or speaking with other parents, you know, not. Not in a, at a very, you know, not a confrontational way, but that so that people can understand, look. You know, and I will tell you, I've been polling, this is separate, polling parents and kids. And kids have been telling me that they have friends who really want to be vaccinated and their parents don't. And I'm not talking about women. So her suggestion was if we can engage our coaches and our parents to get more kids. Running to curriculums that I say. James Smith from the Board of Health. He was encouraging mandating pool testing. Amy brought up the fact that for our oldest students who got vaccinated as soon as they were eligible. They're now gaining in effectiveness in terms of their vaccine. And that we should look at anything we're doing to include boosting in any of our discussions. She said. Because these kids are now six months out. And Julia Pass, who began our discussion, ended with. You have to be careful in any possible policies you establish to not discriminate and pit one group against the other. Not pitting, in other words, not pitting those vaccinated against those unvaccinated. So she expressed that. You look as we establish any policies to look at that factor. So that. You were there and Beth, you were there. Are there any factors I missed? Sure I did.
Well, I think, I think we have some updated data, which I think if you would like Sandy could give.
Why don't you go ahead?
Okay. That's okay. So, um, the data I received today is for grades six through 12, because some of the sixth graders are just now eligible. 72% are vaccinated. That's six through 12. We have some fully vaccinated. We have some that are in process that had one dose of vaccine. We know that there is a number of students, approximately 18, that are not vaccinated and reportedly not. The plan is not for them to be vaccinated. So that's grades six through 12. In grades four and five, our preliminary numbers are that 31% of those two grades are vaccinated. And I believe it's 9% are in the process of getting vaccinated. So we've had one dose.
Can you repeat that?
Sure. Grades four and five?
Four and five.
Okay, grades four and five, 31%.
Fully.
Are fully vaccinated. These are preliminary numbers. We're going through it. This is a process. 31% are fully vaccinated, 9% are in process.
Were you gathering those numbers?
There's a system, um, the Massachusetts immunization, I don't, the patient system.
Okay, so it gets like zap to the school nurse when you.
They, they log in. It's a portal. So when a child gets vaccinated, the information is uploaded to all the vaccination information. Doctors, students.
Okay.
It goes into a portal. So now a child's name is in there and they can all.
I'm, I'm only asking to my individual experience. Uh, we did a clinic in DuBois, my daughter's second shot, she's in fourth period, and we were asked to just send a photo to the school nurse.
Right.
I can see people just not doing that.
That's correct.
That's why we're asking.
We're asking for that.
So it is. Because that would help us.
Relying on self-reporting.
Yeah. Well, it's where we can't, because we can't get, not everybody can get access.
The information I'm reporting to you came from the system.
Okay.
Okay.
The system that the nurse has to log into, like, it doesn't automatically get sent to her. She has to log in.
Have to log in.
Yeah. Okay.
You have to have access to children that you're in your district. You have to have a photo.
So it's manual, like it's one by one, you're putting it in like.
However, let me say, because it was wonderful, the other day Wesley Drager said that she had this, she thought she might be able to. Use her information and her system to kind of merge with our rosters. So I sent those to her today. We've been communicating and she wrote back to me that around that she needs an Excel spreadsheet. So I. Maybe tapping somebody. But she feels like she's going to be able to help us get that information. At least she's, she's trying. She's trying to help us out. So if that happens, that would be terrific.
I mean, people were awesome about that because.
Because our nurses right now are dealing with many, many things and they're trying to get this information when they have a free moment, which is almost never. So we're just trying to, to see what we can do to, to utilize our resources. And she's been really helpful so far. So hopefully we'll get more information about that.
How did we determine that the 18 students would not have been get that?
That that was actual reports from parents to the school nurse.
Was it solicited or was it unsolicited?
I think we've been checking in and then these were the, the reports from. Now, obviously the seventh through 12, they've had a longer period of time to be vaccinated. So this has been gathered over the past few months.
Is there a, a plan for nurturing adamant families that they're not going to get vaccinated, their kids vaccinated, to nurture them and educate, hopefully? A soft way to bring it back?
I think it's kind of back to what we were talking about that, um, you know, those conversations do happen with school nurses, but I think. Like Amy Hudson, who is, she's the, the head public health nurse for Tri-Town. Just how are our parents talking to parents and.
We're not, we're not giving up on the discussions around there, but it's around, um, I mean, that'll always be a common thread and, um, educating and, and. Continue to provide opportunities, but. You know, they're, they're just very concerned about, um, again, the polarization and just what, what it means when you say make. You know, and thinking about that from a, from a child's point of view who maybe can't make that decision.
Yeah, for the purposes of this meeting, I did get in touch with Amy and. Then I'm gonna try.
Jim.
Jim, to see if they would make a statement to be presented to you, but in an effort for them to stay out of the politics of things. And they are not heads of public health, of boards of health of any town, so they can't represent. An authority that we would normally use to advise us. This is our unbelievable situation where we don't have our state board of health or our local boards of health. Being willing to guide us as they have for decades. So just putting that out that I did reach out to see if I could get something, but. I, they don't think there was, there was some.
No, I think, I think Juliet and Pat would say to you that they gave you what they got. And didn't Juliet say that she sent a statement this afternoon again? That I, if, if you want me to, I'd be happy to read because she said we could read it.
Yeah, why don't you? Because if you don't mind.
She sent it this afternoon in response to the, the request today. Um, and she said, I, because I just don't want the impression that the local boards of health were not interested. You know, she, she did say. This is what she wrote at 3:27 and she copied the entire public health group. She said this morning, the Egremont, this morning, the Egremont Board of Health discussed at great length. Your email request to Jim and, and Amy regarding mandating COVID vaccinations for eligible students at the SB RSD. On October 15th, an email was sent to you both, meaning the two of us.
Yeah.
With the Egremont Board of Health's position on the matter that. In that email, it was stated that the Egremont Board of Health felt any vaccine, vaccine mandate for schoolchildren should come from the state.
Yeah.
The email also stated that the board did not feel one group should be mandated to get vaccinated, in this case, students and not all groups, teachers, staff, those entering buildings, et cetera. The Egremont Board of Health has not changed their position on these two points. We would like to add that vaccinations for individuals in the five through 11 age range is still under emergency youth authorization, uses. Use authorization by the FDA. A vaccine mandate in that age group could prove to be problematic. The Egremont Board of Health continues to take the strong position that every eligible person should get vaccinated. Clearly that is the best choice for everyone to reduce infection and stop the further spread of COVID. We offer our residents information on vaccination clinics and sign up venues when they become available to make the process as effortless as possible. In time, we hope every eligible person will see the need and the importance of, to the community to get vaccinated. Please feel free to share this email at your committee meeting tonight if you think it will be helpful. We realize the school committee's desire to keep schools open and students safe. The issue of mandating vaccination is a complex one. The Egremont Board of Health would be happy to assist in the community outreach if that would be helpful to you. So I just want, she did make a response.
Yeah, okay, I'm glad I missed. I'm not, I missed it because I was in meetings until just now. So, uh, Carrie Anne, your hand is up.
Yes, thank you. Um, Bonnie, thank you for your notes and that, thank you for reading Juliet's response. Um, and. This is a very interesting time in terms of the lack of leadership that happens at higher levels and the position that it puts us in. But I'm wondering, um, if, if we need to have the conversation about. Visitors to our campus and their vaccination status. I know that we have on our agenda in a little bit to be talking about a vaccine mandate for our students. Which means that we will then have, you know, dealt with our staff and our students of our community, but we also have visitors that are coming onto our campus. And that seems to be a missing link in our conversation about in terms of keeping our community safe.
Thank you, Carrie Anne. Dennis?
Well, it's kind of interesting to hear what some of the boards of health are saying because. You know, the, uh, the, the whole area of how inoculations are handled is well spelled out in our general law. And it's basically up to two places. It's either the state board of health dictates here's how children need to be vaccinated in, in the schools, okay? Or, but the state law also specifies is that in times of crisis. That the local board of health has the power to basically force vaccinations. We never have that power. But the local boards of health have. And it kind of is interesting to hear that they have that power. But they, and they say that everyone should be vaccinated, but they don't choose to use that power.
Thank you.
I mean, that, that's, that's kind of surprising to be quite frank.
We're living in surprising times, but thank you for adding that, that perspective. And, um, I thought, let me see.
Where's the other one you wanted to add?
Yeah, well. We. Oh, yeah, we do have the ad hoc advisory COVID subcommittee on this list too. Do we want to move you up to there, Carrie Anne, since we're on this topic to, to round it out?
Sure. Right now the status is, is that, um, thank you so much to those of you who were able to get me recommendations. I have a list and I'm reaching out to folks who, um, you all suggested, including the district public health team. And I'm hoping that we can, for our, the. And I'm hoping that we can for our, the January sixth meeting, that we can have the experts join us for our second read of the immunization policy, so that way we can ask any outstanding questions that we might have before we take a vote.
Okay. So can I ask you a question on that procedurally?
Sure.
This is for everybody. Was there a step where you were going to give us the list that you were considering for our approval?
Yeah.
Yes.
Sure, yeah, I have the list that I can send to everybody.
I think we need to do a a formal vote, like, once we have the list. I hate, I mean, everything that we do, as we know, slows down process in the most irritating way. But I think that we'll get more buy-in for this group if we, for the next meeting, you give us the list of people who are willing, and then we take a vote to determine if if we accept that list.
Great.
Okay? And that's sort of what makes it difficult for them to weigh in on a second read, but.
But just the name is not enough. So, like, is there a CV or?
Oh, yeah, there's a name and a rationale behind each person.
The difficulty about that part, Jeffrey, is that that would then require you all getting me their CV in terms of the recommendations, then I would need to reach out to them to get that in order to put it on the list. So I don't know what you'd prefer to happen. I I don't know how how I can get their CV without reaching out to them.
Well, when you say reaching out, are you reaching out to see if they're interested or to appoint them?
I'm not appointing anybody. We appoint people. I don't a a point anybody.
Okay, so you're reaching out to see if they're interested, and if they are interested, then you can say, please send your CV. Would that work?
Okay, great.
Is that okay with you?
Yeah, that's fine. I I was just thinking that as an alternative, and I'm not saying that this is a go, perhaps for the January sixth meeting, Beth and her administration could get somebody from the, what's the name of the committee that is advising?
Well, I can ask the public health team, maybe, if they would show, if they would like to.
Maybe we we invite some members from the public health team to be on, because we don't have to appoint them. And we do our proper due diligence on the advisory team. And maybe that takes a little bit longer to do the proper vetting and all that stuff. Just an alternative.
I don't, I don't know if they'll, they could come. I can ask, right? You know, try to put on.
All right, so as it stands, we're hoping for our next meeting, that Carrie Anne will be able to present us a list of the people who are that that have been put out to be possible members of this advisory subcommittee for our review. But, and with as much support information as is reasonable to obtain, because we don't want to burden you. Most people, I mean, I know who I sent has some stuff on the web, and a CV could come easily after that. Okay, thank you very much, Carrie Anne, for the initiative. Want me to send this to anyone?
Yeah, if you read for it, you could you could send it. We'll put it in the packet.
All right, so. We'll go on to, I can quickly give the report as the liaison for the early childhood. Yeah, okay, so now we're go, we'll continue. I'm not too worn out. I'll do that if you.
Well, it's these things for this, and maybe we.
Oh, yeah. Okay. Okay, great. So finance subcommittee chair, Jeffrey Brown.
Yeah, we finally had a meeting today. It was riveting, fifteen minutes long. We voted through the calendar. The next finance committee, subcommittee meeting will be January twenty-sixth at five thirty PM. I encourage the public and interested school committee members to sit in as audience members. I also would like to make a point that, to my left, Laura Rodriguez has joined the finance subcommittee. We're excited to have her energy there with us, and Jane made an appointment midweek after that meeting. Thank you.
So the community relations, the public school advocacy group, Danil is no longer chair. I asked Laura if she was interested in chairing, so we could get it going, and maybe we could get a co-chair to help Laura get the work done, or at least a mentor in Danil to to get her started, because I did the same thing to to Jim, you know, newer members are not exempt from leadership.
We can get out voting.
Yeah, so I I would recommend that we figure out from the community relations, public school advocacy, who is going to support Laura in a possible co-chair situation. Yeah. Well, there's a guilt factor here that you don't want to let her down, which I thought would be well for you.
It's palatable.
Thank you very much. I think you're gonna make a great team. And as your discretion, until we would direct you for a particular job, I think if if you have something you feel like you should take up as a committee in terms of this charge, then bring it to us and
Is there anybody else on that committee?
Yes, there's.
They're all chairs.
Bonnie is on it.
Bonnie is on it, too.
Yeah. Jeff is sort of emeritus. Carrie Anne is not on it. I've been sitting in on meetings last week, too.
And I still refer to you as only.
Yeah, well, because.
Jeff will knows how to do this.
Yeah, no, I, we're not, you're not an official member, but you are an emeritus member with great advice.
Jane, can I?
Yes.
It would be good if we now do have, because I didn't really even realize that I was still on the finance committee. Okay, I I had sent Jeff a note, and I'd sent, I had sent somebody else a note.
Yeah, well, we did go over subcommittees about two meetings ago, and there is a chart that we looked at. It's on, I believe it's on the website.
I'll have her, I'll have her resend it to all of you.
Yeah.
Is it on the website somewhere?
It has been, I'm not sure.
It's on the, it was in the packet, so it will be on the website. I don't know if it's updated after everybody. I have to check on the status, but I'll make sure it's updated with what we know, and then set as that.
That's how you're on three committees now. All right.
Oh. We'll talk afterwards.
You finally read the email.
Well, you said it today while I was working on that. Not much lead time.
Okay, so now we're moving to the policy subcommittee. Turn it over to the policy chair.
Okay, well, we we have a a couple of first reads tonight. The first, and let's try to make them, and, you know, we've done this before, and if we can do it again, I think it'd be worthwhile doing it again. As far as I can tell, there's no limits within, you know, our structures, whether whether that's the regional agreement, whether it's our policies as it exists, or in master general law, that basically say we have to do it in two separate readings. That's a practice that we established, God knows how many years ago, probably four generations. I don't know.
Dennis, I I talked to the the chief of all rules and regulations of Glenn Puscher today, and he said, if anything that we want to do, if we want to suspend regular rules, we have to make a vote to do so, but we do have the right to do as suits us. Just to back up what you said, it does say, we do have a practice, but we can.
I think he's reading from Robert's Rules of War.
Right.
That's where he's rule. And we are, we are supposed to operate under Robert's Rules of War, so.
That's what I'm saying. I'm just, for people who are not familiar, I thought it would be nice.
So I guess I begin my my part of the program by saying, I'd like, I'd like to move that we suspend the the reading, first, the first and second read process, and go with a full reading of at least a couple of the of things that we're going to talk about in policy today. I'm looking for a second.
Second. Well, I find that too vague.
I do, too.
So can you be more specific? I mean.
That's about as specific as I can get.
Well.
My phraseology.
Well, we have two separate policies to deal with. Are you trying to apply that to both?
Let's let's apply it to the first one, JLCBC.
Is there any?
You accept that?
Okay, so she's seconded. Is there any discussion?
Um, can somebody play out what what was discussed in the policy subcommittee? On this policy?
Well, it's going to be a little broader than that, in that in that one of our members would like us to modify, you know, what we had done on the first reading, as a matter of fact. And 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 make some changes to what happened. So this this is going to not be a short dance.
Yeah, in light of, I'm gonna read mine. In light of that, I think going, dealing with suspending the the usual policy of first and second read, if there is needing to be a discussion of the first read, I think that should proceed with the motion that was made. So I would, I would vote against suspending the rules at this point until such time as the committee feels they're ready to make a decision tonight about the vaccinations. Have I made myself clear?
I I think you have. Let me propose a counter idea, which is, why don't we let, instead of introducing the the first, what would be the normal first read, in other words, the the way as we were going to present the policy, let us turn it over to the member who thinks they have a better version.
So you're not asking for a motion for to suspend the rules at this point? I mean, because we've had a motion.
That's all part of my suspension.
Let's keep this on track here, because once a motion is made and seconded, we have to eat. I think we should table the motion.
You can withdraw.
Or you can withdraw the motion, so. Or we have to vote on it, but we can't keep talking until we finish the work we started, so. I would.
Um, I am, to Jane's point, I agree with her thinking on if we are talking about amending the the draft, we should not rush it through, and given the time and the night, I think we still keep our normal process. So I would vote against tabling in this instance. I'd vote against suspending the process, sorry.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, okay.
It's late.
So, yes. So I guess we're in the process of deciding whether we are going to suspend the process and try to get this passed this week, this meeting, instead of the subsequent meeting, which would be our normal time. And I think we should try to take a vote on that first, unless, because I don't hear anybody saying that they want to withdraw the motion.
I'll withdraw my motion.
Oh.
Your hand's been up for a while, Carrie Anne, and I didn't see it.
Yeah, I I just want to say that I am actually, I mean, you've now withdrawn it, I suppose, Dennis, but I'm in support of us actually taking a vote on this, that this be a first and a second read for two different reasons. One is that this was originally supposed to be, this date was supposed to be our second read for this policy. There were technical difficulties during two sub-policy meetings ago, and our meeting was canceled. So everything has been pushed back a week. So I think it's it's an important thing for us to consider. The second thing is, is that this policy, getting it into effect sooner than later is really important, particularly as we go into the holidays, giving families the opportunity to understand where we, as the school committee, stand on this issue. It also gives them the time to be able to go and get vaccinated. Oh, there was a third point. Oh, shoot. Well, that one has escaped me, but I I think it's important for us. Oh, the third one is that the very vague thing that's getting, that in terms of discrepancies about this policy that are being alluded to is very confusing, and I don't really feel like it helps build confidence in any kind of way into what it is that we're actually discussing. So for what it's worth, I think it's important for us to vote on it.
Um, I would like to just, other comments before I.
Point of order, it's not a withdrawn motion until this person's second is agreed, so it's still on the floor.
Yeah, okay, so where are we with that?
I I I I take exception. I don't agree with you. If if the person that makes the motion says I withdraw my motion, it's withdrawn.
There's nothing to say.
Right, that's it. That's what I'm at, too, is what. Yes.
Fortunately, we have it booked.
I don't have my Robert's Rules booked with me, but.
Well, that's how Robert. That's Tommy.
No, this is Tom Meeting.
Oh, sorry.
So.
All right, same practice.
All right, so. It's withdrawn now. We're back to square one, I believe, as to we have a first read that's been offered. And I'd like to make a motion to discuss any concerns that anybody has at this point about the motion, or because it is a very important motion. And usually, when we have policies, the first read is kind of very lightly taken, and then we have the week to look at it, and then we vote on it the second meeting. So this is the weightiest policy that we've ever attempted, and I I'm pleased to have more discussion, because it's only the policy subcommittee that's had the discussion and not any members of the full committee that have been able to weigh in. So. I'm just, I'm saying, well, what we withdrew is a first and second read on the same night.
Right.
Okay, so the first read stands. It's been present, it's been presented. And if someone can make a motion to discuss or introduce amendments to that policy, and I could say so desired, that's, this is what Glenn, this is. Yeah, if you, if somebody wants to make make a motion to discuss any amendments, and it's seconded, then we can continue to discuss. So is there anybody who wants to make an amendment to discuss the first read as presented?
Yes.
Is there a second to Bonnie's motion?
I'll second.
Dennis, second. Okay, so now we have an opportunity, we've created an opportunity for a member of our committee to make a suggestion, and unfortunately, I guess that paper wasn't working, or so do I only have.
Yes, the the motion is very confusing.
Yeah, it is.
Motion, what I heard was, there's a motion to amend.
Or make a different suggestion of a policy.
So then we either discuss it and then vote on, make it on the discussion or make the motion?
No, it's just, we don't have to. No, it's just, we don't have to vote on what Bonnie has to say. We just have to listen to it. We can decide to disregard it. We can.
Well, we'll have to vote on it regardless. So we're voting on a discussion. So could it not just be like, we be more direct? I moved to vote, to make an amendment on this specific thing, then have it seconded and then we discuss that issue. Because right now it's very open. It's not a focused discussion on what the amendments would be.
Well, let me make it easy. At Chair, if I could.
Sure, go ahead.
Let, let me move to, to, to do the thing on JLCBC, which is the policy in question. And then we'll, we'll, we'll take that off. You know, and then we'll decide what we want to do after that. But the point is that there already is a change in, in my opinion, that needed to be made to the one that we had already moved out of policy. I, I think we, we made an error in what we had actually put in writing, you guys.
So would Bonnie need to withdraw her motion to, for you to make that motion?
I haven't.
No, but the thing is you moved to, it was a vague motion. You moved to make, to discuss an amendment on this as presented, like.
No, I'm not, I'm all, I'm whatever it's, so that I can introduce this motion, which is very different from what is currently stated.
Sorry, I'm being a stickler on how it's been timed, but I just feel like this could go.
Should we just go, I agree. Should we just go through the, I mean, what's the best way to proceed? What will you advise?
Well, I think.
Well, everybody has seen this. This has been, this has been sent out. So let's go through the old one first. Make the correction there, then either, you know, move that or kill it. And then we can go on to, you know, to the next step.
Well, the way I see it is we're going to be having two suggestions tonight. Or three, actually. We have the, the, um, the policy that was sent in, in the packet. The second one would be that policy with a change in it. And the third would be a different take on the policy. So I think we have to know what each one of those things is so that we can use our best judgment about the next time we get together, which one of these things makes the most sense to us. But that's the way I see it. Yes.
With that being said, and what the information that's been given us tonight, I think we should table this until the next meeting. And at the next policy meetings, we hash all this out and bring it forward to the committee.
Well, I, you know, I, I disagree based upon what Carrie Anne said. I, I think the timing of, let's at least get something done tonight.
What do you mean by, uh, well, what we're getting done tonight is opening up the discussion further. I do want to point out that in the, in looking at the Cambridge, uh, vaccine, vaccine mandate, it was announced on October 3rd. It wasn't until November 29th until it went into effect. So.
I'm saying there's a, there's an illegal phrase in it that, that we be foolish to put forward.
Right. Okay. So I think you should set, let that, I, the rush ahead here is inconsistent with maybe what some other school districts have allowed people a little bit more leeway, but what you, the change that you think is necessary to what the policies, the subcommittee pass should be put out tonight. I think we should have Bonnie put out what she has. And I think we have then the next meeting to have our discussion. I think putting this on the policy committee to hash out, I think it's a full committee job because it's such a big, uh, piece of work. So, um, I think we are getting something done by you making the suggestion of the change you think is necessary to be legal. Bonnie makes a suggestion of what, what she thinks is appropriate for our school district. And then as a body, we get together on the sixth and we can vote.
I just think you need to go backwards and just, um, someone's got to withdraw everything and someone needs to make a motion to clear this up so that you can at least say, I'd like to discuss first read. Like you've got to have a clear motion and a second.
Well, that's.
I haven't heard there's 35 different.
I made a clear motion of that, that I want to read the existing first.
Bonnie still has a, a motion on the floor. So your motion is.
He has one.
Yeah. Okay. So Bonnie made a motion.
No, Bonnie was ahead of you, Dennis.
Okay. So Bonnie made a motion.
No, you didn't. No, you withdrew it and then.
No, then he made another.
Let, let.
No, but she may want to.
Yeah. Okay. So this is.
Art said, it makes sense. We're looking at something where we know there are errors. I see a whole big section that has to be addressed in this. Why can't we, one, we could consider my motion. We can go through and rectify what's here. And then let the policy committee take all the information from tonight and give us something cleaned up.
I, I think that's what I will say. I thought that's what I was trying to say was if, if we can do this one quickly, do the cleanup, then it can go into effect, period. And we got some protection for our students that we don't have now.
Well, but we have.
Then we can come back at a later time after everybody gets a chance to, to, to read the proposal.
Clean this up as much as you want and, and there are people who are going to be against it.
Well, I, I, you know, I don't know. We'll find, we'll find that out if, if we ever, if we ever get going to considering it.
Alright, what I've been trying to allow at this meeting is the opportunity for the first read to be presented for a discussion of, uh, other ideas that did not come from the policy subcommittee before we jump into a second read to adopt the, the, the policy committee put out and without giving any credence to the other policy that, uh, a member wants to consider. So I don't know that there's, I think this is entirely legal for us to do. And being a fairly inexperienced, um, chair, I'm, I'm trying to keep us on track. So I think we've been going at this, just deciding what we're doing for at least 15 minutes. And unfortunately, I think we've lost the thread. So.
Jeff, did you know these, you said you heard of my? No, well, people are going to have to share my, my friends are dying.
Well, we have to establish that we're ready, you know, 20 of eight to, to do this and feel comfortable that it's been a fair, um, meeting. So.
Point of order, I think we should withdraw the motions and start over. So you, you, you all, let's unwind this and then get very specific about what we did.
I like.
Okay, that's my suggestion.
I like your suggestion.
So the, so you withdrew your motion. Wait, wait, let Bonnie withdraw her motion for a moment.
Absolutely.
Anybody else make a motion that needs withdrawing? Alright. Now, now, now we have a deep breath. Alright, so there is a first read that you have in the packet. And as Chair of the Policy Subcommittee, could you please surprise us of the change that you would recommend? Without, you haven't gotten the authorization of the whole policy subcommittee. That's clear. This is your statement, right?
The, the policy as submitted, JLCB, immunization of students during a time of COVID pandemic. The problem that I see that exists is if you go to the last sentence of that document, it basically says, all age eligible students must be vaccinated against COVID. That is not our purview to do. We have no right to put that in our policy. We, we, so I would like to change what Cambridge did to basically say, what we should say is all eligible students should be vaccinated against COVID. We can still then continue on by saying, failure to obtain a vaccination will not result in exclusion from school. But we, it's not within our purview and, and in effect, we would be publishing an illegal document for us to say that they have, that, that students must be vaccinated. The school committee has no right in policy to specify, you know, vaccinations. That is a board, that is either a state board of health or local board of health, purview. We have, we can't say must.
Okay.
So it's, it's a very simple change that could be made that if we then make that change and just eliminate must and put should, which I think should would, would still be a word I'd like to see in there personally. Okay? Uh, that would get us then in a position where if we pass it tonight, in effect, that now becomes policy. But basically we will be in favor of vaccinations.
First read. For that, that's, that, that it would be accepted as a first read?
Well, it would be accepted as a first and second.
If, if we were to waive that. So.
Right.
Um.
Would we need a motion to accept that change?
Well, we could accept that change and then I think the discussion continues because the second part of this is, is being challenged and may need a change as well.
So we want to do one at a time?
Yes, we do.
Motion to accept the change that Dennis put forth, changing the word must to should, vaccinated against COVID.
So.
Okay. So we have Danelle making a motion and Jeffrey seconding. Uh, any further discussion of that?
Just for clarification, Dennis, this is from Cambridge used should in their, yes, their language that they used. And this was the, what they did back in October.
Yeah. And they did it with the support of their Board of Health, the same in Amherst where they mandated vaccination. Their Board of Health asked them to make that call. So we have a missing piece that undermines our authority even further. So, yeah, so we can vote on that now?
Yep.
Unless there's another question.
Any other questions? Okay. So Danelle?
Yes.
Uh, Laura? Yes. Uh, Jeff?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Jane? Yes. Art?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Jimmy? Yes. And, uh, Carrie Anne?
Yes.
Okay. So we accomplished something. Alright, another deep breath. The discussion continues. Right? I saw a deep breath from Carrie Anne. Thank you. Alright, Bonnie has.
Here's, here, I think you need to delete after school. If it's any extracurricular activities. If people are practicing in the morning, if they're doing anything, it's just plain ordinary extracurricular activities.
But that wasn't your main motion?
No, that's not my main motion. I can't make that now.
Yes, you can.
I can.
Well, we voted on accepting his, and now, no, so now we're discussing the whole issue. We've got the, a corrected first read. So.
Because I want to make that other correction.
Alright, so.
It can't be a, will you accept the policy committee that after school is not acceptable?
Just make a motion right side.
Yeah.
Okay. My motion is to remove after school from description of extracurricular.
Second.
Discussion of that? Alright.
So can.
Oh, sorry.
Just for those of us who would actually have to try to manage this, um, student government happens during the day. Other than them coming through the court. So why would we, why are we putting that?
Yeah. So this is.
That's why I said just extra, doesn't matter when it, well, let's.
So student government is not.
Are you, are you crossing out? You're just going to say extracurricular and, and you're not going to list these specifically because then it's conflicting.
Thank you.
You see what I'm saying? You either say.
Outside of school hours? I mean, because student government meets within school time. Is that what you're saying, Beth?
Even if it's within school hours, anybody engaged in.
So all the club work that happens during the day. So student, nobody's going to participate in clubs. So the robotics club that happens during the day. I mean, this is what we're saying.
What robotics also takes place weekends and other times.
Well, I think the clar, this is where some more thinking has to be made because.
Which is why Art is right.
Yeah. Okay. Alright, so extracurricular means not part of the regular classroom practice. Is that what it means, Beth? Or does it mean outside of school hours?
Well, it's.
We are going to be splitting hairs here. That's why I'm being quiet up. I want to really think about that.
Yeah. Well, at some point that has.
We could have, now I can look up the actual, definitely.
I think Jim was.
Yeah.
Bonnie, Bonnie, is what you're saying, your motion is strike after school. That's the whole motion.
Yeah. But in other words, it's extracurricular, but I see, once it's enumerated, it says after school visual and performing odds. But that takes place weekends, holidays, Shakespeare and company. It's just not after school.
So extracurricular means of an activity at a school or college pursuit in addition to the normal course of study. Extracurricular activities include sports, drama, music, chess. There's some examples.
So it's outside. Yeah.
Um, I, I think what the, by strengthening our language around extracurricular activities creates more of an incentive to vaccinate, that's what motivates people to do this. And I, that's, I think the issue that we're going to have that with discussion about is how strong of an incentive are we trying to create without outright mandated, um, vaccine policy? So I think that's the, the heart of the question of discussion.
And are we?
But we can't, I, my saying, the point that I'm making with the issue is you can't just say that it's only activities that take place after school because you're discriminating. There are things, and maybe practicing at seven o'clock in the morning.
It's a class. It is a credit class.
Well, if it's a credit class, that's an extracurricular.
But it may be when she calls them out and they're out there early in the morning.
They get credits. I won't be.
Well, they, you know, they, as it stands, they, they pretty much specify what they are.
Okay. So I, I would recommend that in order, in, in interest of time, because we're getting close to eight o'clock, that, that, that we put, put that back to the policy committee to hash out what the meaning of this is in terms of during the school day or activities that are, uh, not happening in, in the classroom. The regular classroom.
So basically we're going back to what Art suggested.
Yeah, but I still want you to have an opportunity to.
I'm totally right.
Yeah, okay. So, uh, I think do we want to have the policy, some committee straighten out that language so it's very clear?
I, I'm not, I'm not opposed to sending this back to the subcommittee, but we do have a motion of testing how strong of a message do we want our language to be with the motion that comes back? So I'm, I'm interested actually to see where this goes.
Well, I don't.
Because this might, we might have this exact same conversation on January 6th.
I don't think that we're making the motion for this as a message to parents that they have to vaccinate. We're making it as a motion to keep kids safe. I don't think we're using this as a lever to pressure parents to do vaccination that they don't feel comfortable with. That is the basic thing that I want very clear. That this is about student safety and if we need. And if we need further precautions for out of school than we have in school, that's, that's what's at issue. So, um, I think we have to decide what we just, uh, whether we're talking about out of school time in a very particular way. Carrie Anne, yeah, sorry, I'm looking down, not up.
No, it's okay, um, I think it's important that we all have this discussion here about what we actually mean by extracurricular activity instead of the policy subcommittee working on it. Like, we need to know what you all think about this, and we can reword it, but like Jeffrey just said, if, if, if we just at this juncture have us go and decide on this, we might, we're just gonna have the same conversation on January sixth. Cause right now, I don't really feel like I have an understanding of what we as a committee want to do. So it would be helpful to hear more about what it is that the committee is thinking.
Um, I just wanna interject here, I listened to the entire Berkshire Hills, um, meeting last week and got a sense that people were feeling that things that were not done under school auspices are especially led by out of school people and the, the sort of atmosphere at out of school led to a, a more lax application of masking and social distancing and other things. So my, I would hope that the, the policy subcommittee would look at anything that happens within a school day that's led by school staff and faculty does, would not be suspended because the rules in the building are, are kept very carefully. And the risk is not increased if you go to government or you go to robotics, because the same staff has an understanding of how things go. Quite different when somebody from an, an out of, out of school organization offers some wonderful program after school. They, they don't, they're not in the same ethos as we are in the building. So I would like it to be clear that anything that's happened during the day that's not in a classroom but is led by a staff member would not be considered extracurricular.
So do you need a withdrawal or a motion or?
Well, I think we need to, I mean, I think Carrie Anne was looking for guidance for the policy subcommittee of what, how this might be defined, so I was just putting in my consent. So I don't think we need a motion, I think we need guidance. Is, is that sufficient to meet the needs that you have, Carrie Anne?
Yeah, I just would like to hear what other people's thoughts are.
Oh, other comments, Dennis?
Well, I, I hate to even bring this up, but there's also another sentence. But it's, it's somewhat in my view problematic in, as it stands.
Well, can, can we finish with what we consider?
Well, you know, but we're kinda, let's, let's figure out what we're gonna do with this whole thing. Go, go up to the first sentence, what does it say? Students entering school for the first time. That, that basically, in my view, is also somewhat problematic. Cause it doesn't really address. What, what, what we're trying to prevent are basically students coming in infecting other students instead, okay? And, you know, this, this is basically a policy that was put in place with the idea of, not in the era of COVID, but in the idea of, you know, the, the kids would, before they came to their first time in the school. I E. as, as very young children, but, you know, in addition to going to the doctor and the other stuff that's prescribed and so forth and so on. The, 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 you know, okay, the first time in the school is, is what this was built for.
I think you were really right.
Yeah, I think at two minutes to eight, it's pretty clear that we don't have, we're not going to be able to vote on anything tonight because we're finding, because this is such an important document, that it'd be absolutely clear and, uh.
I would like Art to reintroduce this motion to the board outside of.
Danell's been freezing her.
Yeah. Uh, Danell, you.
For a while.
Have I been stifling you?
Um, I kinda lost my train of thought with that, but I have something. Wow, after. Yeah, um, Jane, I was just gonna say that you stated that very well, um, your guidance.
Yeah.
Um, so I don't understand why, I, I don't see why, like, why we can't kind of discuss that, not discuss it further, but vote on that now, the way you stated it. Um, it was very clear, I, I don't know why we would need to take that back again to.
Okay, so.
Subcommittee and then come back again with the same kind of guidance.
Well, thank you very much, and we could vote on that definition as being how we're gonna look at it. The other thing that got brought up about that this document is really written for, you know, some of the language in it that here is not appropriate for what we're trying to do now, because this is not students entering for the first time, it's kind of an add-on to something. So in workshopping this further, so it really is to the letter what we were wanting and also taking into account possible other look at how we deal with after school activities. Um, in terms of whether we're going to be doing requiring vaccination or we're gonna be requiring pool testing, which is what Berkshire Hills has decided, is deciding on tonight. And, um, so there, there's plenty of work to be done and very frustrating because we, we looked at it more carefully and, and we have things to reconsider.
You still have Bonnie's motion on the table?
Yeah, we do.
So I don't think we can make another motion.
No, I'm just saying, uh, so. I think the clarity is. So to your point, Danell, if the policy subcommittee, um, follows the word. I don't think we need a motion, I think that you, if we have a sense of that's the right path to go on, then we can get the wording once everything else is cleared up.
Now, I just don't wanna come back January sixth with a third time and not have a feeling for you. Um, this, in this first sentence, Dennis, it, it's not even referring to COVID. It's, this is just for our immunization records put forth by the public health team or, you know, the board of public health generally, it didn't even refer to COVID the first sentence. I think it was just like an introductory.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's basically a, a bending of the prior policy, sort of.
So.
Point of order, you still have an open motion.
Yeah, I know, and the answer is, for the time, I'd like to have Bonnie present her motion tonight and, um, her.
Well, the motion is on.
It's specifically on after school.
Oh, okay, so let's go, let's do that. Okay, so this has to do with removing after school from this, uh, policy. Danell?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Jeff?
No.
Okay, Bonnie?
Yes.
Jane? Yes? Art, sorry?
No.
Dennis?
No.
And.
Yes.
Jim? Yes. And Carrie Anne?
Yes.
All right, so that carries. So we've made two edits to the existing policy and.
May I ask a question though?
Yes.
Is now the question, though, going back to discuss whether after school is appropriate. Uh, what, extra, after school, extracurricular? And removing after school, extracurricular, that's what we just passed through, right?
We just.
We didn't say curriculum.
We said after.
After school, to strike that, but it wasn't the whole conversation about where we were starting to, I, I'm just confused by that.
Okay, so we, we didn't, we made a stab at defining what extracurricular means because we have a list here that we took from some other place that probably needs some work. And to my point, anything that happens in the building that's led by staff that's during school hours should be exempted from this.
This list, okay.
From this, um, requirement.
Okay, so the idea is like, it could be a non-school staff during school hours, like a field trip. Well, actually, no, it'd be school.
No, there's, there's pretty much during school hours, there's hardly none, non-staff things that happen.
Okay.
As far as I know.
So we just need a very clear list of what's permissible or what's not permissible. And be very specific, okay, understood.
Because if you have.
I think.
School-sponsored social events, it could be an evening event that's only open to our guests.
All right, so that, that's.
It would be based on the definition.
Yeah, so. Yeah, okay, so now we're, we're getting close to adjournment. I'd like to let Bonnie entertain her motion for, based on some on more information that has emerged since the, um, policy committee gave this policy, so.
Can you see my computer? Let's get this into now.
I, well, I've got it on my.
You've got it on yours, okay.
So I can bring my computer over if you guys wanna read it from here.
Dennis, you have, do you have?
I thought I did, but now I can't find it. I got so much paper here.
All right, so I'll give.
Did you bring many copies?
No, that's what I've been saying for an hour, my, my printer completely sucks.
How am I supposed to see it?
You can't read it from there?
No, she can send it to you.
Yeah.
I don't have, I, I don't, I don't have.
I want to art.
Well, I can send it quickly here.
I'm sending it right now, if people wanted to art.
Well, you've read it, but would you like to see mine maybe?
Well, I, I, I remember it enough to, to know that it's, to me, it looks a lot better than what we had.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, well, feel free, cause I've read it more times. I heard the send noise, though, Carrie Anne, it should be there momentarily. So, um, Carrie Anne, have you had a chance to read? Good, okay. So, uh, discussion is starting and Jeff, I'm recognizing you.
Um. Bonnie, as always, you're a very good wordsmith, and I think you put into, on paper, a lot of what the complexity and the nuances are. Um, I don't feel comfortable voting this through as the exact language as a policy, but I think it's very compelling, so in some way.
That's why I didn't use the word policy.
Very cool. Oh, so this, this is a motion just to be able to commit outward communication, so we're not talking about policy or what.
It would have to, in other words, in there, it says that hopefully we create, we get policy from it. But this is a motion, the objective of this motion is to state the strong sentiment of the school committee that we believe firmly in vaccinations as the only way to move ahead. Two, we don't want our school system closed. Three, we do not want to exacerbate any of the polarization. I watched everything with Berkshire Hills meetings, I read everything that I could get my hand on out of the, and burst, this next to nothing.
Yeah.
Um, and Cambridge. And I've watched consistently what is happening in terms of statistics. And at this point, we know that the Omicron is doubling every two days. My objective here is that we get to say what we believe in. And at the same time, I don't think we could do anything unless we are, take, I believe we should take the lead as other school districts fumble around. Talk about extracurricular, our kids play against other teams. If they go out, I mean, if the Nets barely were able to field a team Tuesday night. We go out and there are other school districts that are not taking the precautions we want, might as well turn it in. I think this is our opportunity to speak as a school committee and as a community. We know, given the vaccination rates of our teachers, we know, given what our people are doing. We're making, we're making inroads, but I, I believe unless we take a really strong stand and we push and especially after attending Tuesday mornings, um, health worker group. I think, you know, this is what, this is what really motivated me, the combination of watching everything from Berkshire Hills and taking part in Tuesday mornings, um, grouping.
So I guess as a, a point of order, if this is the motion, would you like to read your motion and then?
Yes, I will read it and get a second.
Oh, wait, 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 sorry, sorry.
I wanna ask a question because in the section, uh, three, um, I'm not clear on whether, what you're after there because in the other policy.
Well, we have to have this, I have to make the motion and get a second, and then you could.
Oh, okay, we haven't had a second?
We haven't had a motion.
We haven't.
She handed it so we could read it.
Oh, okay.
Motion, vaccinations, I have to stand, I mean, I've been to many meetings today. Vaccinations are one of our most effective tools to reduce the spread of COVID-19. With the best interest of our students, staff, families of our greater community in mind, the school committee of the Southern Berkshire Regional School District establishes the following guidelines in order to maximize opportunities for safe in-person learning. One, all eligible district students should obtain the full vaccination regimen as appropriate for their age against COVID-19. Medical, religious, and special needs exemptions can only be granted by the superintendent based on provided documentation and consultation with the medical community. Failure to obtain full vaccination will not, at this time, result in exclusion from school. Upon, two, upon approval of this motion, the chair will forward a copy of this motion to the boards of health of the five towns, Desi, our state, local, and nationally elected representatives, in the hope that they will quickly establish necessary guidelines to assist the school committee as it establishes policy in keeping with this motion, that's what it says. the school committee as it establishes policy in keeping with this motion, that's what it is. Three, further, the school committee directs the superintendent, working with her administrative team, our nurses and the district's doctor, as well as our public health team, to provide the school committee 48 hours prior to our next full school committee on January 6th, in parentheses, possibility of changing to January 13, with a plan for pool testing for all students vaccinated or not involved in any extracurricular activities, as well as additional safety precautions and vaccination options to the students. This plan should include a suggested schedule, the need for additional personnel, including community volunteers, and costs associated with implementing this plan. Finally, the superintendent shall share this motion with other Berkshire County superintendents and other administrators beyond the Berkshires as she deems appropriate, in the hope that this motion will initiate a county-wide plan for protecting our students. It is the hope of the school committee of the Southern Berkshire Regional School District that this motion both conveys our belief that full vaccination, including boosters, is the best way to slow down the spread of COVID-19 and our desire to decrease already heavily polarizing commentary. Clearly, we all have the best interest of our children at heart.
Second.
Okay, so discussion questions?
Alright, I will go to answer your section three. There is a need, especially after I watched the Berkshire Hills for greater clarity, but it was clear that their school committee did not really understand all of the issues. That just brought up another issue when you say, well, robotics is needed in the middle of the day. Therefore, my purpose of that is that any child involved in what the administrative team determines or be with that is extracurricular activities, there will be pool testing. And I don't, there should be no discrimination between those vaccinated and those not vaccinated. All ex students and extracurricular, they will not opt in when they're doing that. It will be mandated if this motion passes. And that return in that motion, that part of the motion also to the administrative team to suggest to us if there are other actions that need to be taken. And since we are dealing with budget season, we need to know impact in terms of money. That's the purpose of section three.
Thank you for that. So is that hand up or are you just?
Yeah, no, I just had two questions.
And I, Carrie Anne, you next.
Carrie, you go. Were they?
I don't know who was first. She, she's waving to you.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, so, and number three, do, two questions. For the pool testing, do you, there's not a specification. I mean, is it every practice before a game?
No, it's once a week.
Once a week. So if there's three practices in a week, it's just going to be one?
It's just once. That's the recommended practice right now. Wait, and does, I probably should put that in there and make it weekly pool testing. Good catch with our regular pool testing.
Well, this could also be part of the plan that's submitted. I don't think we need to vote on that. And you're going to be submitting a plan if this is going through.
Right.
So I don't think we need to.
I think she's just asking. She's getting a sense of what that would be, I think, because she's her comfort level.
Right. So the, because this is just follow, even though it's extra, extracurricular, it's still following school guidelines of once a week.
But it may be that for the, when you meet with your team of people that they feel, you know, especially for nurses.
I don't think so. I think the state is, is giving us some guidelines around what would be reasonable and how many we can do.
Okay. It's not recommended anyway.
And then, so then the pool testing.
Can you hear her? Can you hear her now?
Okay. So then is it your intention that the pool testing would replace the vaccination requirement for extracurricular activities?
No, we're still pushing vaccines like anything. It's, we're saying that that's the most important thing.
But we're not mandating.
We're not saying, we're not mandating in this, that vaccines. We're saying, though, every student involved in extracurricular, it must be pool tested. And this is to avoid a lot of the accusations that have come of that, that we're discriminating against the other. This is where there's a really big problem, because our kids now, because of the way the MIAA reorganized, our kids are no longer just even playing against Berkshire County teams. And they're on buses now for way over an hour to play sports elsewhere.
So, yeah, that, I mean, it's just so contradictory to me because I don't understand. That's huge and that's kind of scary. Why would, why are we taking away the vaccine? I know.
We're not.
Suggestion, but mandate for extracurricular, we're sending them on buses to other places around who might not be as safe as we are, but we're sending our kids unvaccinated out there.
If it were up to me, I, I have been a major proponent of mandated vaccines. I am not a major proponent of destroying our programs and in, especially after listening to the experts on Tuesday exacerbating, and you listen to the ones Tuesday, but then I also listened to the Berkshire Hills. They called Darren Ainsworth. Some of them, you know, gave Sheffield addresses. I, we can't at this point, I don't think we can safely, not even safely, I don't think it's wise for us for the health of our district to mandate this. And that's why everything in the beginning says, we fully believe that we fully want it, but to say that you want to represent Mount Everett and play in the band, and even though your parents are totally against the vaccine, you're a great trumpet player, but if you don't get vaccinated, you can't play trumpet. And that's what we would be saying, be segregating only extracurricular kids. And I really came around on that because I was totally, I was totally supporting until the past two weeks, forcing. So my motion is, and, you know, that gave me a perspective, but it was all the professionals on Tuesday and then watching, I won't comment since this is on public here. Watching that going on.
I'm gonna, if you feel excused with the interruption and the lateness of the hour, I want to make Carrie Anne standing waiting for a bit to speak. And then Jeffrey has his hand up, and then I'm gonna try to close this meeting down pretty soon. And we know that we're going to be working on this in our next meeting, too. Yeah, Carrie Anne.
Thank you. So, as a district, we have taken on our anti-racism and anti-bias action plan and have committed ourselves, I mean, from my perspective, is trying to be leaders in that movement. And part of that is making sure that we're very clear about our language. And, and I appreciate Bonnie, how you say at the end about the polarizing commentary. And I think that we have an opportunity here to work on that by removing words such as discrimination and segregation from this conversation. People who are discriminated against are oppressed, and they are discriminated against because of those identities. People who make a choice to take a vaccine or not, that is not discrimination. We need to be very clear in these words when we use them. They cannot be used lightly. And the same thing for segregation. So I would really appreciate it if we can remove those words from this conversation. The second is that I feel very confused about this as a motion versus policy. And, and just, I, I get very lost in this. I appreciate your initiative, Bonnie, but I am really in support of us passing a vaccination policy for our students and not doing something that is any less than that. Thank you.
Okay, so let me, so anybody who hasn't spoken.
Jeff, please.
No, no, but I'm looking around the table. Some people are talking more than others, and I always like to leave a little space.
I haven't spoken at all.
What, are you, are you willing to?
Yes, I would, if I can.
Yes, I'd love it.
One, what do we do?
Speak loudly so that.
What, I'm sorry, what do we do if a parent says, you can't test my kid? You know, from the further depths of some of this stuff, they'll say, it's government controlled. You can't test my kid. Two, these are different. This is an attempt to write a policy based on past history and stuff. This is a statement of our, of our intent, of our feelings about this. I don't, you know, so I, I don't know. You know, I think as a, people with some responsibility for a number of children, we should say what our, what our feelings are. Does that mean we're going to follow through with, with a policy? That's going to keep some kids out of school. Have them withdrawn from school by their parents because we're asking the parents to do something they don't want to do. Are we going to put, as I've said in other places, are we going to put a five-year-old child between your mother and a teacher? Just general observations.
Alright, Jeff?
Okay. I feel that Bonnie's, and I think Jim was kind of alluding to us, this is a motion, it's not policy. This is a statement from this. I don't think this squashes the debate about the policy. So even though Bonnie is expressed for not thinking that's the right, the, the way that the policy is written, like, putting that policy aside, I think this is a good motion that can actually put some concrete action in motion now that is not alienating different groups and can be applied to all students. And then the other point is, Carrie Anne, I appreciate your bringing our attention to the discrimination segregation comments. I support removing those characterizations from the motion.
Well, that's funny.
Just the first is going, Jim, to what you said. That's the point. If, if a child is the center on our basketball team and the parent says, you can't be pool tested, that's where we draw on it. And say, if, if we're approving this, we're saying, hey, look, there's a whole team there. You're all on top of each other.
Well.
You've got to do it. And we're not talking about five-year-olds.
Well, as you said, the NBA and the NHL are requiring testing.
And they find that they.
The big boys are getting tested. Should, the high school boys get tested.
And, and exactly what Jeff said. I know it had to be brought up in, at conjunction with the policy, but it is not a policy. It's a motion that we stand by. And in terms of the issue of discrimination, I use that term in terms of, that's what you're hearing all around. And parents are using that term. Now, it took a long time for us to educate, but I did not use the word segregation in any way in this document. The document doesn't use, I, I am responding to the polarization and the language that you hear again and again. They had like 113 people sign on at Berkshire Hills.
Okay.
So my statement is, that's what it is. This is separate from this.
Dennis?
Madam Chair, I, I can't not mention this. In the, in Bonnie, you've done a great piece of work. However, you know, one of the things that you emphasize in that piece of work, and that you've discussed openly with us, is keeping the public happy. Our job is not to keep the public happy. If you read what you're supposed to be doing as a school committee member, it's protecting the children in the district. And our first and most important actions should be taken on that. And if we feel that that's most, best handled by getting as quickly as possible a vaccine mandate, that's what we should be doing. We should not be reacting to how a small group of people feel about that they don't want their kid to be vaccinated. You know, if we think that that's the right thing to do for the children, that's what we should be doing. That is part of your job as a school committee member.
And I am not attacking me on this. I am not disagreeing. This motion is made to go as strong as it can while recognizing the climate we live in. If we pass separate, another policy as well, we have to deal with reality.
Right.
And the reality is.
I'm not, Bonnie, I'm not, I don't mean to, I'm not attacking.
I'm just gonna, this is the process.
If you're premising something, and, and I feel that what you've done is good, and it's a good publicity document.
Well, I hope it's a lot better than that.
But I don't think it's something that we would want as a quote, policy, but because our policies should be all based on what's the best thing for the students in the district.
And this is not a policy.
Alright, so.
Look at how it was.
You two, this is out, you're out of order. I think you, you express an opinion. I think other people might have the opinion that the social, emotional well-being of the children and how they're relating in their families is, is part of their health. And so dismissing the parental concern and the conflicts that kids can get into because of that, I think is is an omission of an important part of this. So I think what we have on the table now is a reconsideration of whether we want to, we, we agree that we want to strongly state in our policy that we, everyone should be vaccinated. I think we've introduced that we want to consider substituting a mandate for vaccination for extracurriculars and adding, switching that for a mandate for pool testing. And I would like to see the school, the policy subcommittee bounce that, I personally would like to see the policy committee bounce that around. That's, that's my.
This is now Monday. What do we?
No, no, but I'm just saying that this is not policy, but it can inform policy. That's what I'm saying. And I think, keeping in mind the superintendent's knowledge and leadership, based on my observed, observation of what goes on in other districts, I think we need to work very closely with our superintendent on this. Even though she legally doesn't have the power to set policy, she has done an amazing job managing the situation, and I don't want to get into, uh, I think that we should work together on this. That's just a statement. So I think to close down tonight's meeting, whether people want to accept this, cause this statement of our position. cause, this statement of our position or not, is, we should finish that off and then pick up our, our vaccination.
All the question?
Yeah, okay, so.
What question can you call it?
The question is, motion to accept this statement that Bonnie made and in it making, communicating with our local boards of health, with the state officials about our strong stance that vaccination should be in place and asking administration to come up with a plan about how we might implement.
Or how we will implement.
Well, if the policy is that we have pool testing for extracurriculars, we need to spend advice about how that could be put into place and when. So I think that's what we're voting on. Is that right?
We're voting on this motion, yes.
All right, so let's, and the dog doesn't get to vote, Carrie Anne, so go try.
But isn't he so cute? Make us all smile.
No, I wish.
Thousand percent.
I wish we could all bring our dogs. I would be very. Yeah, okay, so, um, so Jim, do you want to pass this motion?
We want to.
Are, are you voting yes or no for this motion?
Yes.
Yes.
Dennis, yes, I gotta keep track of this. Sorry, Art, yes. Me, yes. Bonnie?
Yes.
Uh, Jeffrey?
Yes.
Uh, Danell?
Yes.
Carrie Anne?
No.
Okay, so we have seven yeses and one no. So the motion passes.
And, and the result of the motion is going to be then, what, this will be released as a school committee letter to the bodies, to Bonnie's benches?
The chair now informs section two. Forward a copy of this motion to the boards of health, the five towns, the SC, our state, local, nationally elected representatives.
All the people that you made.
Right.
Yeah.
And at the same time, the superintendent, now Beth asked that because there will be people on, believe it or not, they're allowed to take Christmas break, that we should, or add a a meeting in order that she not have to present to us everything to us two days before January 6th.
I can't get all this done.
So Jane had suggested the possibility of the 13th after negotiations.
So that's six hours and then you want to.
Well.
Well, I'm just being honest.
Or change the meeting, move it to the, on the 20th.
It could be a different day that week. I just think six hours.
Yeah.
So whatever, I think the thing is, Beth, maybe it could be that you're working, Jane.
On the day.
That we don't let it go.
No, no, no. As soon as possible. So I'm, I'm thinking if we have a business meeting on the 6th and a shorter meeting a few days after that, just to deal with this issue, I think that would be the cleanest thing to do.
And if I can get it done, I'll say as soon as I can get it done.
Yeah.
And then the next action is that Beth will share this with other superintendents, and she has a leading role in other organizations. And, you know, let them know. I think, you know, it's, there, there are definite actions to be taken here, and it doesn't proclaim policy.
I think this is part of our school advocacy, because when I talked to MASC leadership today, they were pretty astonished that our boards of health weren't taking positions. And they didn't understand why that is, because there are other areas they are taking positions to support their on, on this issue. So any leverage that we have, I mean, we appreciate their difficulty in taking positions because it's really the state that we rely on for that. So it's, it's a very difficult time.
It really is, but we've got to defend, you know, a position. I don't mind standing up for the fact that I currently in vaccination.
Okay, so in, in the interest of finishing the agenda before.
Carrie Anne has third.
Let's ask one question really quickly before we move on. I'm sorry, I don't know, then what are the next steps for the policy? Is it that it's going back to the policy subcommittee? What's happening next?
Well, the policy subcommittee is going to clarify what's extracurricular. And I would encourage the policy committee to possibly discuss the difference, the, the pros and cons of mandating vaccination for extracurricular or mandating pool testing as, as another.
I think also Dennis brought up a very good point, that introductory care that
Yeah.
has to be looked at, because if you said it came for a more, you know, kids five years old coming into the district. To make it more COVID-specific.
Yeah. Am I, am I clear on? So I think that's what, I, I particularly would like to see the policy subcommittee take off.
And so that needs to happen by the 6th in order for it to be a part of this larger conversation?
Well, that's pretty tricky, isn't it? Because we have vacation.
I'm just wanting to make sure I understand all the steps that are sort of unfolding.
Well, I think that if we, the 6th is a business meeting. I'm proposing that, given we have a vacation, and next week is not a great time to be meeting. And not the next week while people are vacationing. So by the 6th, it's rather unlikely that the policy committee could have met. So I'm going to be working on trying to preserve that 6th meeting. I want to look at the other business that we need to do. And we may just try to move that 6th meeting a little bit later, but not to the 13th, because that's an negotiation day, and we want people to be a little bit fresh. So is that clear, Carrie Anne? Moving as quickly as we can and being reasonable and respectful to our people who are taking vacations. So I'd like to.
The grievance procedure, what?
Yeah, we could pass the grievance procedure. Dennis?
Yes, we, we probably could.
There's nothing to argue about there that I know of. This is something that's required by law for us to have in place.
Yeah, I guess that moves us to item four, which is the grievance procedure. And this, this is, this is something that doesn't necessarily, you know, part of our, our, our kind of like normal deal. But, you know, it's something that, you know, has been put together, you know, by the, by the administration to.
By the state.
By the state, really, and adopted by the administration to, to, you know, to, to see how things are make, making sure how we're handling things under title nine, which are normally not things that the school committee gets very much involved in.
And this was.
So the question was even, this, you know, this, this was initially brought forth on whether or not this was even, should be part of policy. I, I personally think it could be part of policy. There's no reason why it shouldn't be. And I, I feel it's something that we should move forward with.
I think this, our attorney brought this to our attention because there is a policy about Title IX grievance, but there is not a procedure that, that was attached to that, and this enables people who do have a grievance to have easy access to the procedure. Given that we just went through this, it seems like it's really important to have it alongside the other policy, which is ACAB. Yeah.
Is this a first read?
Yes.
Is there a request to do this as a first and second read?
Well, I think Josh would love to have it done, but I don't think that there's a problem with that, that I want to hold.
I don't know whether there's, maybe the superintendent, is, is there a timing issue on this at all?
Well, the discussion was that we were required as administration to go through training. This is a requirement that all, all administrators had to do by August, or before the start of the school year, by law. And then the, the request was that the, these, the handbooks were updated and the regulations were included. That was supposed to be part of this process, and it wasn't asked. It was, you were told this is what had to happen because of the importance of it. So, so I, I, you know, I, I don't think there's much, I didn't think, the policy subcommittee, I believe, recommended to move it forward to the school committee. So I think without any changes or, so you could decide that you're just going to add it in. That's your call, is this your?
Bonnie, this is the question I wanted to ask this night, so, but now I can. Is, can you check it to make, see if it has any conflict with anything we are looking at in negotiations regarding the clauses related to grievances?
It doesn't. This is a completely separate, okay, outage, brand new, very clearly defined, no exceptions.
So can I make the motion?
Yeah.
That the school committee approves?
Oh, wait, if you want to prove that this is a first read, if you want to suspend.
The first read.
The first read and say this is the first and second read, and let's do it at a bottom line.
I will make a motion that we suspend the rule for second, first and second read.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. All right, so now we need to have one vote to suspend
Right.
the rules and a second vote to accept it. Okay, just so it's, it's good, okay?
This is just suspended.
Okay, so Carrie Anne, we're voting to suspend our usual first and second on this particular issue?
Yes.
Danell?
Yes.
Yes.
Bonnie, Jane, yes.
Yes.
Art, yes.
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 Yes, okay, so now.
I make a motion that the school committee approves ACAB or grievance procedure for complaints of sexual harassment under Title IX of the Education Amendments of 1972.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, Carrie Anne?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Arthur?
Yes.
Jane, yes. Bonnie?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Danell?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That's fine. All right, now. Get back to you, Danell.
I have nothing.
Personnel and negotiations.
Yeah, so I want to be out of here by nine o'clock.
I could finish that quick.
Yeah.
Personnel and negotiations continue immediately. We have four sessions set up in February. We did our first presentation to the SPRBA of our initial proposals, and we will be next on January 13th.
Oh, wait a second. I do want to go back to the policy subcommittee and announce that Danell Kelly is now a full member of the policy subcommittee, as we said we would do before the minutes. Right? Okay, got it. So we already had the.
Grounds.
So now we are, I think we already got the report from Carrie Anne about that pop, the superintendent evaluation subcommittee. I think we got that report already. And so we're, my chairman's report is nothing. I would not bore you with anything else. And now the superintendent's report, which is important.
It is, but honestly, I, I, I think we, I thought, seeing that, I thought the weekend ended Tuesday. That's how long this week has been. I really, I'm okay with not saying anything else. Other than happy holidays, everybody.
Yeah, and then, yeah.
And thank you for everything that everybody's done. That's what I started with.
If we had any energy, yes, it would be a party.
It would.
Okay. And we have Julie's report in our packet, and I don't know whether she wants to say anything.
Probably not at this point, but unless there's questions, but she could.
Yeah, no, I'm all set. Thanks, Chang.
Thanks, Julie.
Okay, and how about you, Sandy? How are you?
Good. Early chat at the Test Works meeting. That's all I'll say. That was hours ago. Really good.
Today? I just have to say, this is such an, we are so fortunate to have that. I mean, it really is probably the only reason I've gotten to the rest of the day, which is what I told.
So what I think I'm gonna do is I took some very detailed notes about what happened at the meeting. I'm gonna send them out to you all so that you can feel updated. And I don't want to do short change, so.
I mean, I will talk about it.
I have things to say, just not tonight.
Okay, so future agenda items.
Oh, we've got loads of it.
So we, we're, let's get finished with what we got to do.
Together, it's a hundred things.
Yeah, okay, I'll take a motion.
So moved.
Yes.
To adjourn. Yeah, so Jeffrey and Bonnie, all right, Carrie Anne?
Yes.
Okay. Danell?
Yes.
Jeffrey?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Jane, yes. Arthur?
Yeah.
Dennis?
Yeah.
And Jim, yes. Thank you for coming. I would have rather had a party with freshmen and dancing because.
Dancing.
Well, I think we have to celebrate all the work that you put in.